Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Special Meeting for Wednesday, January 20th, 2021. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Carlin? Evans?
Here.
Garner?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Olmstead?
Here.
Peschel?
Yeah.
Selaji?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We have two workshop items tonight. I'm delighted that we're all able to be together, even in the, uh, in the virtual Zoom mode that we find ourselves in. Uh, two workshop items tonight. First one is Police School Liaison Officer or the PSLO program related to future funding. And the second item will be a new schools, uh, planning update. So let's begin with the Police School Liaison Officer Program. I don't know who wants to start the conversation. I think this agenda item came from the Common Council or Mr. Roloff, so we'll...
Mayor.
Mr. Roloff, do we have someone to take role for City Council or was that done before I joined?
We normally don't take roles for workshops, but I note who's, but I have no here for the clerk. We don't typically take minutes for these, for these types of meetings.
All right then.
So, Madam Mayor, if, I don't know if you want to, uh, lead off, I can certainly provide background regarding the PSL program from financial standpoint. Uh, Assistant Chief Kurt Shaney's here this evening. He's very familiar and engaged in the program as well.
Yes, if you would share the background, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
I think Assistant Chief Shaney can give, you know, more operational background, but the, um, I think one of the issues of, of concern is the, uh, is the financial part of it. So might as well, might as well cut to the chase. The, um, there are currently five Police School Liaison Officers, uh, assigned through the district. They are all, um, full-time employees of the Oshkosh Police Department. The school district reimburses the city for, um, one half of four of the officers, uh, for the months that they are, uh, on campus. So basically the nine months of the school year. Uh, the remaining months are paid by the PD because they're working on other duties, uh, within the police department. The fifth, um, position has traditionally been funded with the city. I honestly don't know all the history behind that. Um, Assistant Chief Shaney might be able to shed a little light on that, but, um, we, uh, you know, recognize the value that, uh, I think the police department gains from being closer to the students and being a positive role model, um, presence, uh, in the community and the schools specifically. And, uh, and we certainly, um, enjoy that and appreciate that. At the same time, uh, it's the Oshkosh Area School District and, uh, the, uh, the services we provide are provided to all, uh, school, um, students regardless of their residency. So, uh, there is an issue of fairness from a financial standpoint. Captain Shaney, excuse me, Assistant Chief Shaney, um, I don't know if you've got any more, any history about that or, uh, uh, anything you can share with the group as a whole.
So I don't, I don't know how the, the agreement came about originally. Um, I would just add a little bit, uh, to what you said, Mark, and that's, um, the 50% comes from the, out of the five that we have. The 50% comes from the four lowest paid and then the PD takes the highest paid SRO. So they're, they, they do come at different wages. And then the only other thing, uh, is the overtime. So any overtime incurred is at, is billed at 100% rate.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Kurt.
If I could ask, um, perhaps either of you, do either of you know, um, whether or not there's ever been any discussions either, um, with some of the surrounding towns that, that benefit from that, um, that are in the school district about any kind of contributions?
I'm not aware, um, although I think I was at a meeting one time and just happened to mention it and a town representative just kind of snickered at it. So, uh, but I don't think anything formal has been asked of the surrounding towns. Um, there would probably be a call for some consistency. And, you know, each town is, is independent and I don't know how many townships are officially in the district, but I would say probably seven, uh, when you add up Black Wolf, Nakaimai, Pickett, um, Amro, part, portion of Amro, Algoma, Oshkosh, Vinland. So I think you're probably upwards of around seven different townships. So that would be difficult to harness all of them. But to answer your question, I don't think that was ever, has ever been specifically done to my knowledge.
Well, thanks for that background. Um, a, a, a community question that came up was whether or not there was a disparate impact, uh, for students of color in interactions, in police interactions. And, uh, we know that there's benefit, obviously, to having those relationships and this partnership, but it was a community question that came up as to whether or not it was, it had any, um, unintended consequences as relates to students of color. And whether or not the city should be, um, subsidizing that. I, I think to, to keep it somewhat focused this evening though, you know, we've, we've had this discussion during the budget. The conversation started a couple of years ago about what might be another alternative in that financial agreement. And so here we are. Do other council members or other school board members wish to weigh in on the discussion?
Madam Mayor, I think Superintendent Cartwright would like to speak. She's got her hand raised.
I, yeah, and I don't get to see those. Uh, the host does, but thank you, Vicky. And thank you for being a next second set of eyes there, Matt, our House Member Mugarar.
Thank you very much. Um, a couple of things, I, we, it's our understanding for, um, the town of Amro. We do not believe, um, the Oshkosh Area School District has, serves any of that, that township. So just, it would be, we, to our understanding, it's six townships, um, and not seven. So I just wanted to put, for clarification. Um, also, Mayor Paul Mary, related to, um, the, the impact and, and such, what we have experienced and what we have seen is that our law, our SROs interact with our students and is much more in a proactive manner rather than in a reactive manner. It is my understanding and I, I stand corrected if, if I'm incorrect on this, please, is my understanding that, um, there was benefit, um, for both the city as well as for the school district in having our school resource officers, um, available within our schools. I understand the concern from the community member, uh, related to, you know, is there disproportionate impact? What I would, what I would, um, convey is that if there is some type of interaction or impact that occurs on campuses, um, it would occur regardless if there was a school resource officer on campus or not. The difference would be is that we would just be calling, um, the police department in order to come provide support versus having the support available on campus.
Which I guess, you know, brings us back around to the, uh, the financial arrangement discussion. And it's my understanding there is a, a memorandum of understanding which, uh, this agreement, is it another year of three years? Is, I, I don't recall. I remember seeing it. Not sure if anybody has that on hand, um, that memorandum of understanding.
Yeah, it expires August of 2022.
Okay. So is this school district interested in having further discussions about, uh, kind of balancing out, um, some of that, uh, cost?
Mayor, I'll ask our board members to speak up on this, but I do know that, um, Councilman Ford has been raising his hand and is trying to get your attention as well.
Mark Roloff, who's our moderator tonight?
This is a workshop, so it's, uh, Dr. Herzog and yourself.
Okay.
I, I think typically this has been a free-flowing discussion. When we've been around the table, it's been pretty collaborative, collegial type of thing. So it's just more tough about looking for that waving hand.
Well, my screen only goes down so far, so my apologies to Councilmember Ford. Please go ahead.
No apologies at all. This is all strange. I'm sitting here in my basement, my basement, excuse me. No, this actually dovetails on what you were saying, um, Mayor Paul Mary. I'm just curious if there are numbers there about what percentage of students in OASD are from the city of Oshkosh? Just get an idea of, you know, what, what's the demographic of the, the students that, um, our officers are serving in OASD?
Yeah, I wouldn't have any way of knowing that specifically. I'm not sure if the school district has that data. There are two elementary schools in the district that are outside the school, outside the city boundaries, Lakeside and, um, Oakwood, uh, but the remainder of the schools. And I think in, in every case, all of the students at those schools are non-resi-, are, are not residents of the city. And I'm not sure, Kurt, do you provide any services to those schools or is the Sheriff's Department provide some service?
The Sheriff's Department provides some services as well.
Okay. The, the elementary schools, uh, don't have as significant a presence, uh, with the possible exception of, say, the DARE program. The DARE program, uh, which we're very proud of. They've, we've got a good presence in, in, in the schools. But beyond that, they spend most of their time at the middle schools and the high school. Isn't that fair, fair statement, Kurt?
Yeah, that's accurate.
So Dr. Cartwright, I don't know if you have any statistics about city resident versus non-city residents?
I apologize. We were not prepared for that question for tonight. So we do not have that information really available to us. Uh, what we can do though for impartial answer is that Lakeside, Oak Elementary, Oakwood Elementary, and a small piece of Trager would be outside of the, um, outside, would be outside of the, um, Oshkosh, or outside that zone. So that, that would be approximately 900 students, so about 10% or less.
Yeah.
So would you say that, um, we have a number of folks who live outside the city limits that come into the middle or high schools also?
So it would be, it would, ye- yeah, the, yes, I think the more, I think also one thing we need to take into considering, consideration is where are the campuses located? And the campuses are located within the city of Oshkosh with the exception of, as I said before, Lakeside and Oak, Oakwood. Um, so if we had to call for service, then the city of Oshkosh would be the one, um, that would be responding to, um, those, those requests.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm, I'm good.
Okay, Madam Mayor, if it's all right. Um, I think just, uh, we're already 15 minutes in the meeting and we haven't actually said why we're here, I think. Um, so I'll just, I'll try to clear it up real fast and real quick. You know, we're going through, we went through 2020 budget cycle. We've gone through 2019 and several council members have concerns regarding the burden sharing of the SRO program. I don't think it's unfair to, to say that we all should agree or that we all, or most of us would agree that it is a hugely beneficial program. And, uh, none of us, at least I will speak for myself on this one. I do not want to see it going away. Uh, I think it's hugely beneficial to the students, staff, uh, and the surrounding, uh, areas as well as just the community at large, as well as, um, big benefit for our police force. But the city of Oshkosh seems to be bearing, uh, disproportionate, uh, costs to do so. I think we're roughly, like they said, you know, we're picking up, we're sharing 50/50 on four of them, but then we're picking up the full boat on a fifth. And going through our, you know, having our budget discussions, just like you guys have yours. Several council members have asked, you know, is there any interest in, uh, having that discussion with the school board? And that's why we're here tonight, that we wanted to see if there's interest on your side to, to try to figure out a, a more even cost sharing of it. Many of us don't know why it is the way it is, quite frankly. Um, uh, but trying to have that conversation with you guys tonight, at least to start that. And if there's, uh, interest, then obviously then it's, it's Mark and Vicky's, uh, role to talk about details and report back to us and, and give us more information. But I think that's, that's what we're looking for tonight is to talk about your interest level and trying to, to help us, you know, uh, even out that burden sharing.
And thank you, Councilmember Mugarar, because, um, yeah, this conversation, uh, goes back to, I think, when Superintendent Cartwright, uh, first, uh, came to Oshkosh and there may be a couple of different, uh, council members and maybe a couple of different school board members that, um, maybe didn't have that, uh, recollection that the rest of us were part of those earlier discussions. And it's my understanding that, um, you know, we're, we're able to have this conversation in a workshop format, but, um, certainly wanting to look at reviewing that agreement and see, you know, what, what could continue that partnership for the successes and how can it, uh, be improved?
Madam Mayor, I would also add, and I saw the, the note from, uh, Board Member Carlin, you know, is there a specific ask for the city? Before I answer that, um, Steph, I would say that one of the other topics that came up in recent years was, um, a belief, uh, by a good number of people with both, uh, within both the police department as well as the school district that perhaps we needed at least one more Police School Liaison Officer. And that would be very problematic for us with the, with the current funding. So if there was discussion about an additional one, um, I think we would look to the district to help even that out because, uh, Kurt, what's the current distribution that we use with our, uh, our SROs? And I would also point out that the sheriff's deputies that serve Oakwood and serve Lakeside are funded with tax dollars from the city of Oshkosh as well. So we're paying for those regardless when, when county tax dollars are used. So that's, that's part of the fairness issue from our standpoint. But Kurt, do you recall what the discuss, or can you describe how the, um, uh, school resource officers are deployed? Give everybody an understanding?
Yeah, I'll just be very generic on it. Uh, we, obviously the high schools are, are very busy. So we have, um, SROs dedicated specifically to the high schools. The middle schools we distribute where, um, some of our SROs have multiple schools that they're responsible for. And so they, they distribute their time as they are needed in the, in the various locations. So, um, if we have an absence or, uh, a shortage or something of that nature, then they'll pull together and, and help to cover, we'll have multiple SROs covering a location. So, uh, we see our highest needs in the, in, in the high schools. Even during the pandemic, when we pulled SROs back, um, there were still students that were required to show up in the schools. And so, uh, the partnership that we have, uh, we were asked to still provide two liaisons during, uh, time period when we pulled the other liaisons back and put them onto the road.
Thanks, Kurt. So, uh, you know, for Board Member Carlin, it's, depending on if we discuss that we want to have more presence, uh, the discussion of school consolidation, obviously, obviously has some impact, but, um, the officers can spread themselves only so much. And Kurt didn't even talk about the grade schools, but the grade schools are kind of trickling out of the, uh, the middle school ones. Is, is that a fair statement, Kurt?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and if I could just add, um, prior to the meeting, I didn't know exactly what the topic, you know, what we were zeroing in on. Um, but I did have our crime analyst just run the numbers for, uh, a normal year, I guess. So for, uh, 2019, uh, if anybody's questioning the value of, of the program or how busy they are or the need for, you know, another added position, our SROs carry a heavier caseload than anybody else in the department. So I'll just give you detectives in 2019 carried a caseload of 452 cases, total assigned cases. Our SROs had 724. So, uh, you know, our, our vice of narcotics was at 76. So they're carrying an extremely heavy, uh, caseload spread thin, um, but we manage.
So I guess the question is, um, how much is that salary that the city is paying 100% of for the fifth SRO? And are all of those functions that SROs are providing necessary by an armed officer? Or are there, uh, opportunities for, uh, you know, social work? Is it, I, I guess I'll just start with those two questions, uh, because those came up in other discussions previously. And is that dollar amount of the fifth officer, is that something the school district would be open to, uh, covering 50% of that one?
So Madam Mayor, Assistant Chief Shaney, can I answer, uh, your question? So the bill, uh, had our office manager run it. I kind of anticipated that question. The, the, the dollar amount for the officer that we covered is, uh, $31,145.57. So you, you know, 30, 32,000, I'm sorry, 31,000. Um, as far as some of the duties, I just, uh, had the analyst give me a generic breakdown of the calls that they handled in 2019, a normal year. Our officers handle, uh, everything from, uh, child protective service reports. They all get assigned to the school, the, the school resource officers, uh, sexual assaults, drugs. And we also assist on the disciplinary hearings. Uh, we deal with, uh, a category, generic category called disturbances and a generic category, um, called juvenile cases as well.
So if I understood correctly, then the school pays half of all of the lowest salary of the five? And you're saying that that fifth one that we pay, the city pays 100% of, is only making 31,000? Do we have officers making less than $31,000?
No, uh, so it's the time that's dedicated. So as City Manager Roloff stated, we bill for the time, uh, and wages that are applied when they're at the schools. So for instance, during COVID, we only billed, uh, let me see if I can find it. We only billed during the period of, uh, 1120 through 317. And then this, and then we didn't have the officers in the schools other than, uh, the two high schools. We then again picked it up when the school reopened, uh, 91 to 924, and then it went virtual again. So we're not billing them for all the time they come back and they're working on the road.
If I may, um, Mayor?
Yes, please.
A couple of things, only because I know I have several board members that want to provide some public feedback and public comment, since, so that we're all, we're all hearing one another. Uh, one of the things that you had posed was about, um, having, not having individuals at the school sites without, um, a service weapon. Uh, I just want to remind all of, and this is my recommendation for my board, um, as well as for the city and, and city council. Um, I just want to remind everybody, we just recently went through an event where, um, I'm extreme, I'm extraordinarily grateful that we did have an SRO at the school site. And unfortunately, in, in line of duty, that individual, um, did have to use their service weapon, um, regrettably. And, but it, it was not by choice. And I think that's very important for us to also, um, take into consideration and to understand and what could have potentially happened had the scenario been different where there was an individual with a weapon, not SRO, on the property. And now you have law enforcement or a law enforcement representative, um, on the property and cannot appropriately handle the situation at hand. So I'm just putting that out there for common conversation for us to consider as a part of your question, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, and I guess I'll just kind of go back to, do you, does the school district keep track of, um, what they're spending and what they're receiving, um, in this program? Cause I, what I heard Assistant Chief Shaney, um, reference was a different dollar amount than what we were talking about during the budget talks. I thought we were like in the hundreds of thousands perhaps for the program.
Madam Mayor, can I clarify?
Yes, please.
So again, the dollar month that I gave you, the 31,000, that's for, uh, this year, the, the, I'm sorry, the 2020 year, which was a COVID year. So it only covers the first couple of months, you know, January through March. And then, so that's why that's a lower month than what you would probably be discussing on a normal year. If that make, if that.
Sure. So, so nobody here in this room has the normal year costs?
I would say that on an annual basis, that person probably makes about $90,000, uh, total compensation when you add benefits and whatnot. And if you use three quarters of the year, you're probably looking about, uh, about $65,000 to $70,000 annually for that fifth, for that fifth person. And then I see, uh, Board Member, uh, Garner raising her hand as well.
Please. I just want to be real direct. So we're talking about between 30 and $40,000 is the ask. Is that correct?
Yes, half of the, uh, fifth officer that the city, uh, pays 100%.
Okay.
Or alternatively, if there's, if we want to have a sixth, would you pick up the cost for the sixth?
Either way, it's going to be 50 to 70,000.
Yeah, but I think you've got the number right, Allison.
Okay, thanks. Yes, um, I hear an echo, sorry. So I wanted to better understand how that is billed. Um, so we as a school district only do the nine months. So for the five officers, that would leave 15 months that we are not paying for, right? Between the five, and there's three months, so. But it sounded like what the officer was saying is that instead of just billing that way that we're billed for the hours that we use? Sorry, that wasn't a very clear question because what the officer said changed the way I was going to word it. I guess I'm just wanting to understand how we are billed. Are we billed for the hours used or are we billed for the four officers that we pay 50%? Are we billed for the 50% of their entire salary for the whole year? Is that more clear?
The, I'm, so this is Assistant Chief Shaney, uh, talking. If, uh, so because of COVID, we didn't think it was fair to bill for this, the typical school year. So I'm going to try to clarify also for Madam Mayor and anybody else listening. So, uh, 2019, I just found some stats here. So 2019, the SRO salary during the school year was $369,308.90. The SRO salary billed to the school district, which would have been 50% of the four lowest weight, uh, four lowest wages, uh, was 143,178.03. We had overtime during that normal year and that overtime was $27,408. And that overtime was $27,408.36. The school, under the agreement, the school district pays full amount for overtime. So that's what's factored in there. Being an unusual year, and it's the first time I've seen this not being in there, we billed when the officers were actually assigned to your school. And so that's why it looks fragmented. Does that help to clarify?
Yes. So in 2019, you said $369,000. That was for their salary for the year. And we.
Correct, that was for the nine months, the normal school, the normal school time. Right? That was for your normal, a normal school year.
I'm sorry, we didn't hear any of that.
That was for the normal school year.
Yes. So were you billing off nine months of their employment? Or were you billing off 12 months of their employment? That's what I'm trying to get down to.
Nine months.
Okay.
That's, nine months is my understanding, because that's when they're assigned to you. Then what happens is, in the remaining month, they are assigned back to the Criminal Investigation Division here. And they continue to work with detectives on lower investigations, little little lower involved cases, so that the detectives can work on the higher priority cases.
So our 50% only covers the nine months that are in our schools? That's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
I just had a question. I'll ask the question that everybody's going to be around the bush. As a school system, would you guys be comfortable picking up half the cost of how many officers you need? That's the simple question. And if not, why not? Thank you.
I would, I will speak as a recommendation to my board. I would recommend to the school board that we should commit and to 50% of the costs on that appropriated amount, that nine months. So the month, the actual time working within our school district. We do have ways in which we can fund this. We have been looking into what is the ability of us looking at the cost through Fund 80. So it does not have as much of an impact on our general fund. And there is, there is some flexibility for us to be able to do that. Therefore, we would be able to leverage our budget accordingly, if you wanted to proceed in that direction. So I just wanted to provide you with that advisement as you are taking the question under consideration.
And if I might add somewhat to that, since there's not been a formal ask of those surrounding towns that are benefiting as well, would there be an opportunity to make that ask? Of a proportionate contribution?
From the, from the school board, I do not, I will verify with the board members here, but I do not believe that we would be in a position to make that request, especially given that the schools, especially given that the location of the schools are within the city of Oshkosh.
City Manager?
I would, I would tend to agree with Superintendent Cartwright. I have experience in town government. And I can assure you that based on my experience in town government, and I worked in town government for 12 years, that they will not be inclined to pay for anything within the city limits of the city of Oshkosh. I've been asked to ask things that I think I know the answer to, and I could certainly do that. But I suspect that is what the answer would be. If the council would like to talk about that as a group, when we do our follow-up, we can do that. And I guess what I would suggest moving forward is maybe put some pencil to paper on analyzing these costs so we're as upfront as possible. I do recall seeing an email go back, back in December about the relative cost of the program, and it did about a three-year analysis. And I think that might be a good starting point for us to take a look at what the relative costs are and consider those types of things. But it took a look at 2017 through 2019. So I can't remember which masked board member asked, I'm not sure if it was Kelly or Liz, but you know, that number, 30,000 to 40,000. I was just running some quick numbers as I was looking at this again, and we're back, we're back in that same ballpark.
So we've known that we were going to have this workshop for some time. And I'm a little bit surprised that, once again, as we come together and meet, that we don't have some of that more detailed information. But perhaps something was lost in the communication in setting up. So whatever responsibility council has on that, we certainly need to make up for that. And hopefully, you know, we can discuss some, you know, real pieces of this and appreciate, very much appreciate that the school district and the board is willing to, you know, have this discussion and, you know, working on fairness moving forward.
I know, I know. I know that there are Wisconsin school districts that have talked about removing SROs or PSLOs from their schools. I've not heard that talk in Oshkosh. And my background as a school administrator, assistant principal in the city of Nina, I learned a lot from our then PSLO, who went on to become police chief in the city of Nina, that was DJ Forsey. I saw firsthand what the value is of these individuals. And when I was the principal at East High, we didn't, I don't know that we had a specific PSLO or SRO assigned to us, but there were times when we needed to call upon OPD to come and help out with something. So I'm a big support the PSLO or SRO program. And personally, speaking only for myself, not for the entire board, I don't see a problem with our picking up more of the cost. I agree with Mr. Roloff and Superintendent Cartwright. I think it would be very difficult to recoup any costs from some of the towns, particularly since the services are largely provided in the city of Oshkosh or within the school district. For example, West High, we have students who live out in the towns, and they come by bus or car or however. But I don't, because the services are offered within the school district, within the city, I just don't think those towns would be very interested in picking up costs. But I do think it's a good topic for our own budget development within the school district. And I would support that. But again, I'm just one board member.
Yeah, I'm not able to hear what the conversation is.
That was Board Member said she's going to unmute her mic so y'all can hear it.
I also agree with Dr. Herzog that the, no matter how many officers we ask for or the need, 50% of those of that, of their salary should be, if we do it for four, we should do it for all of them. That's always been the way we've done it, that I've been on here for six years. And I do believe that that is fair. And so I would definitely agree with 50%, including the officer right now, and then any future ones that we do ask for.
And if I may, I think there may be a board member out in the chat room. And the way that council handles our virtual meetings, we only handle technical questions in the chat room and not, because it's a public meeting, it is public notice. So I just apologize that we're not responding to those items, but that's our council practice. So if the board has a different practice, by all means.
Well, I think for just the benefit of the group, it was super, Board Member Carlin said, are we all in agreement that there is a need for SROs? So that's probably a legitimate question for people to at least chime in on. And, you know, I think there's value, and I think the police department sees there's value. Dr. Cartwright indicated that. I suspect that some of the other members of Dr. Cartwright's cabinet see the need from having been teachers themselves and school administrators. So yeah, I'd be happy to, if that's the consensus, which I think that's part of the discussion, so I appreciate that stuff. I'm certainly willing to sit down with the school board, school district administrators, try to look at this. I think the idea was to get it out on the table, see if there was openness to it. It sounds like there is. And if anybody wants to answer Board Member Carlin's question, it probably is worth getting out there on the table as well.
Well, I would just share that certainly, you know, council members sometimes field questions from community members. And we need to educate that the council is separate from the school district in terms of a government entity, and send them your way. However, I share that, you know, there have been several concerns with regard to that value added. And so we certainly are okay with, or I am redirecting them back to the school board and the district on matters of whether or not there should or should not be. But I share that with you in just, you know, consideration that we do frequently, in this past year at least, have had, you know, some of those folks approach us about that and whether or not the city should be involved in supporting. And again, I appreciate the value added. But I do think it's incumbent upon us to share that information. And very grateful to have the conversation about your willingness to, you know, equalize those contributions. So what would be the next steps? Mr. Roloff and Ms. Cartwright?
I would say similar to the bus situation, we sit down and go through those. And Dr. Cartwright and I worked very well in getting that, getting that together. And we can certainly do that if that's a, normally, I'll circle back with the council following a workshop, and I can do that. And then Dr. Cartwright can do the same. I took the liberties of putting follow-up to tonight's meeting on next Tuesday's council agenda, and happy to do that.
And we can definitely follow suit as we were probably not at next week's board meeting, but we can get it on one of our future agendas for consideration for formal action. But in the interim, I know that City Manager Roloff and myself definitely can have discussions. That way we can appropriately put forward a resolution.
Well, thank you again. I believe we had another item that was of interest for discussion regarding transportation.
We do not have that noticed. We have new schools, unless it falls under that topic, plans moving forward.
Okay, my apologies, I misunderstood.
Yeah, I think that made it off the agenda after the agreement got modified. And I want to thank everybody involved in the school district for helping us with that. That went very well. I think it's a, it's a true win-win for all of us, given the goofy circumstances of the past few months, kind of hitting the reset button. So between Dr. Cartwright's mask and being a little bit in the shadows, I can't tell what her reaction is, but I see bobbing of a head, so I assume it's okay. There's a little smile there, so thank you, Dr. Cartwright. I thought that went very well. And I think that's why it didn't end up on the agenda, because it was kind of a, we checked it off already.
Absolutely. The only comment I would share to that is we're very appreciative of the partnership. As that we're not going to be able to collect the data in a true research, research format in order to ensure that we progress forward.
I think Jim Collins is on there, and he may have numbers have picked up since school has resumed in the hybrid model. Jim, we had some good numbers the last, the last week, correct?
Yeah, can you hear me?
One moment, though. I believe Dr. Herzog mentioned that it wasn't noticed. So maybe we can't really have that discussion.
Right. That would correct. We were, we just wanted to express that we appreciate the partnership.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Collins.
So the other.
That's no problem. I was just gonna, we don't have, just an update, though. We did.
I'm sorry. No.
No, we can't. It wasn't noticed. It was taken off the agenda. My apologies.
Thank you. Dr. Herzog?
Yes? Yes, I do. So our other workshop item is new schools, plans moving forward. I'll defer to Dr. Cartwright on that one, because I know there have been meetings that have taken place. I've not been part of those, so I will defer to Dr. Cartwright on those.
If I may, actually, I do need to defer to City Manager Roloff on this. This is something being brought forward to us from common council.
I, this, I actually asked that this be on there, just because Dr. Cartwright and I have had discussions, and I thought it was appropriate to share with the, both the council and the school board. And if there's any comments you have as a result of this, happy to talk about it. But the, the development of some new schools obviously is going to have some impact on the immediate neighborhoods, both in traffic patterns and in land use. Because once, as we learned from Oaklawn, once a school is built, they do come. I think if you just, for those of you who've been in this area for a while, you saw what happened when Traeger was built. This is a little different, because we're rebuilding a school. And maybe the best example here is when we had Jefferson rebuilt. It does, it does add some vitality to the neighborhood. And I have very high hopes that the development of the schools will have a positive impact and demonstrate to prospective residents, as well as our current residents, that the central city is a great place to raise a family. And in anticipation of that, we stand ready to work closely with the school district to make sure that we're addressing all of these issues, so that when the schools are rebuilt, that they have the most positive impact on our neighborhood and our overall community. To that end, you'll see that multiple department heads are here this evening, because each of them have a small stake in the impact on services, whether it's Mr. Collins with transportation, the police department with traffic control, public works, community development. They're all going to have an impact on our services. And I know Mayor Palmeri has expressed an interest in making sure that we are working closely, and I, and we will. Our planning department's here, our planning division is here, to make sure that we we serve as as much a consultant role as possible from a, from a land use perspective, so that you don't view us as necessarily a regulatory agency, but rather your partner, to make sure that we get the best school that we can for our community and for our taxpayers. So that's kind of it. I'd be curious as to what the timeline is for the schools. But we stand ready to help you and assist you through that entire process.
And if I can just add on a little bit here. The other instance where this issue was queried was in relation to the Jackson Street corridor study, specifically the segments south of Murdoch down to Church. And so some of the questions came up during those sessions. And perhaps Mr. Davis could even mention this, Mr. Collins, on this item that. that folks had some, you know, questions about how the options that were recommended would work. Was it not knowing what the, the expected drop-off flow and that, how that would work? And not that we need to get into those specifics, but at some point, a joint, you know, understanding of that needs to be communicated to, to folks in that area that will be impacted via traffic.
What I, I can share is that we're extremely grateful to the city and to city personnel. As we were going into the initial design phases, and I, I do mean the initial design phases, we did have, we did consult with city officials related to, for example, with easement, flow of traffic, those, those type of questions that we had in order to, when we were going forward with a referendum proposal and presenting information, we were, we knew that, that we had that partnership that, and those conversations that had already previously occurred. We, as you, I'm sure you are aware now, we are in process right now of having internal conversations. I know Bray and Architects has also been working with city contacts as well on some, some of those updates. We're right now in the technicals of, for example, how many classrooms do we really need? What are the locations of some of those classrooms? And as we look for potential impact, for example, like traffic pattern or the layout of the schools, I know that we will continue to rely on those relationships and continue to reach out for the partnership that we have, we've been having for a period of time at this point in time of which we're extremely grateful for.
Okay, so in, in summary, all that is to say it's not quite ripe to share what those plans are? If I understood that right?
We're not, we're at the very beginning phases of these, of these plans. So we're, we're not at the point just yet to where, you know, at where we have significant things that we're talking about. For example, it may be the flow of traffic around the new school over on the Merrill's, you know, in the Merrill location, what that would look like. We're just at that point where we're at the point where we can reach out to the city to say, okay, let's talk about impact. Is this feasible? Is this not feasible in order to deepen those conversations?
And Mr. Davis or Mr. Collins, when we do, when we request the traffic impact analysis for other developments, at what point in the sequence does that usually fall?
This is Alan Davis, Community Development Director with the city. And community development works with all the departments in the city. And if you're talking traffic impact, that would involve Mr. Collins and typically Department of Public Works when it comes to reaching that conclusion. Right now, all we've seen are concept plans in the school district. And Mr. Gunlock in particular has been reaching out to us to explain what they're thinking at this point. But we don't have any plans to share with anybody at this point in time. But we will reach that point where they'll submit through the typical process that we use for every other project in the city. And that'll include a site plan review, potentially rezonings, conditional use permits, neighborhood meetings. It's the full gamut of things that the city engages in when it comes to making sure developments are beneficial for both the community and the developer. And the traffic impact analysis specifically wouldn't typically take place until they're probably at least 75% plans are, are ready to be presented. Because only then can you really understand where the parking and where the drop-offs are really going to be located. So I think it'd be premature to do a traffic impact analysis right now. And that's what the consultants for the Jackson Street corridor indicated to us. But at some point, when the developer, in this case, the school district is ready, they'll be able to supply us the plans. And a traffic impact analysis might be a little unique here in that we typically don't get a lot of school bus movements on site plans. But there'll be plenty of potential impacts in the neighborhood that all have to be identified and some impacts estimated based on the different scenarios that we can come up with. And that would be prepared for in anticipation of working with the neighborhood or neighborhood associations in their review during those public meetings.
Yeah, our site plan review committee consists of, of, you know, all these departments, essentially a multi-disciplined review. And we can certainly have pre-application meetings, which we do quite often. The school district hasn't had to do many of them because they don't do that many buildings. But probably the last time was when Oaklawn was done. But we can certainly sit down with them and, and at that point, get an idea of when we want to have a traffic impact analysis done. I think it's a foregone conclusion that we probably will have one. It's just a matter of when you pull the trigger on that.
Well, and, and that makes sense. The, the questions that came from community during those other Jackson Street discussions was, you know, whether or not there was going to be any kind of adjustments or things to the plan for, I think it was, what did we go with option 1A or 1B? I can't remember which one it was now. That was a few workshops ago, that the city was making decisions on that traffic situation, but it was independent of not knowing, you know, where, where things would be in relation to the conceptual plan. So it was just a question that, you know, the public really needed answers, burning answers to. So I appreciate that everybody's working together and sharing resources on that.
And if I may, Mayor, we're all extremely thankful to the city because they are, many of them, many of the city officials helped us in making the arrangements and the introductions for the neighborhood associations in order for us to put some of that information out. So we're very, very grateful again for our partnership. And, you know, it's really hard to believe that, you know, it's less than three months ago that this even got approved by our voters. And so I just want to put that a little bit into perspective. We're very early in the process still. And we absolutely are committed to our community, to have those community forums, to get the feedback to, and to work alongside with our partners, the, the city. And as we go forward with this, and we're very grateful for Alan, even with his participation that he has had with us thus far. So that way we were all kind of moving in tandem with one another.
And that's, that's why we have these, well, we used to have them, what was it, quarterly? I think this is our first joint workshop in almost over a year. So this helps, I think, us and the public to understand that we aren't completely operating in silos. So thank you. I'm sorry, did I hear someone?
Mayor, this was Jim Collins, Transportation Director. I just wanted to add that the, we did share those conceptual plans with the consultants that did the Jackson Street corridor study. And they did not have any concerns with what was shared. However, I basically echo everything Alan said. It will be important to do that traffic impact analysis when that time comes. But their initial review, they didn't see any concerns with the road reconfiguration and the conceptual plans. But as we all know, a traffic flow is extremely important, both to the neighborhood and also to the parents, students and staff at the school. And we want to make sure that we get that done correctly.
Yes, thanks so much for pointing that out, Mr. Collins. Appreciate it. Were there, I, I really didn't want to take over the show here. I was hoping that the school district had some items they wanted to share or ask of us as well. Were these the only items we ended up with?
Yes, those are the only items that, that were brought up.
I see. All right, so then next time we host and we get the reverse. Is there any other further discussion? I don't see any hands raised, but again, I'm only seeing half of the listing at a time here. So I apologize if I left anybody out. And thank you for your time this evening. Since it's a workshop, we don't necessarily need to formally adjourn, but
Do we have any other, do we have any other agenda items for the future, for the future? Probably we'd have an update on new schools, definitely. I'm, I'm assuming that the issue or the question about the police school liaison funding will be resolved by the time we meet again with Dr. Cartwright and Mr. Roloff getting together on that. And then probably something coming before our board formally to, to act on that. So unless there are any requests for future agenda items.
A future meeting date perhaps?
Wanted to talk about busing. That would be, that would be a good agenda. I want to see how the, the busing services for all of the students in the city of Oshkosh are, are working out. I know that one of the issues for extending that into a year three is that because the schools have been virtual so long, we didn't have the ridership from our K-12 school, public school, well, any of the schools, I guess, that we might have anticipated. So that should be, that should be on a future agenda item.
Future agenda item. And, and then do we need a, a next meeting date? Should we go another quarter out?
We could. As you know, we have, we both have upcoming elections that may impact the, or will impact the membership on our respective entities. So any thoughts on, on that from the school board?
Post-election?
May I make the recommendation that we have Sherry continuing to work with our contact person from the city so that we can coordinate the schedules of both the councilmen as, council people as well as the school board members?
Yes, and it appears Ms. Carlin has a question.
Hi, Mayor Palmary, thank you. I just want to apologize for using the chat feature earlier and asking those questions. I've been in so many Zoom calls where that's how we cut to the chase and everything. So I, you know, I apologize for doing that and my questions were answered. A future agenda item that I'd like to see is the city and the school district to address our mental health crisis in Oshkosh and what resources are available. And I know you and I have talked about that off and on for a long time. I think last year before the pandemic, we were even talking about maybe doing a mental health symposium or something. So I would like to definitely add that to the agenda as well. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for bringing that up again, Ms. Carlin. Appreciate that. Certainly, the landscape has changed a little bit since then, but it's a very worthy topic for us to discuss jointly. So if there's nothing further, would you like to adjourn, Dr. Herzog?
I would. I would entertain a motion from our board to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of one, considering the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data over any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility under Wisconsin statute 19.85 for N1 for NC, A, contract renewals for administrators, and B, superintendent evaluation and contract. So moved by Allison Garner.
Thank you.
All those, all those in favor?
Wait, I need a second, Dr. Herzog. Dr. Herzog, I need a second on that motion.
Carlin, okay, thank you. And I believe that's our cue to excuse ourselves, council members.
That would be